Hello, and I lost my place. Welcome to the, uh, welcome to the March 29th, forgot today's date, ZBAA meeting. If you will all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rich, could you read the preamble?
Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the Board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinance has set out the criteria that must be met in order for this Board to grant our request. The minimum requirements are outlined in the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the Board to grant the request. The Chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between Speaker and the Board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the Board for consideration this evening, but the Board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing, and the Board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. And if you could, please turn off all cell phones and pagers.
Hello. So, first case, let's see, so the next ZBAA meeting will be April 26th, 2017. When you come up, please remember to sign in, and make sure that the microphone in front of you has a green light on.
Bright.
Bright green light. Anybody who will be speaking, I need you to stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. If you're gonna do any testimony tonight, if you're gonna speak at all, you need to stand, please, and raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. All right. First petition, and our only petition this evening, is Michael A. Klaus of Bernstein Schur Sawyer and Nelson PA, petitioner, and Land of Goshen LLC, owner variance under section 3.08.8 of the zoning ordinance to permit, to permit a cluster subdivision to be served by private septic systems whereas municipal sewer is required. The parcel is located at 6 Watkins Road in the R Residential Anacrafer Conservation District and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 4C, Lot 449, case number 2017-09. You've been here before, gentlemen, so none of that works. We have the map, we have the information here. If you can give us kind of a quick five-minute overview what we're looking, oh, wait, before we start, Lenny, tonight, you're gonna be sitting in, 'cause Fran will be out, so pay attention. All right, so, if you can give us a quick, quick five-minute overview, looks like we have some people who are gonna be speaking tonight, so then get into the five points of law, that would be great.
Certainly. Is this on?
Yep.
Okay. Michael Klaus from Bernstein Schur. With me tonight are Bill Lestoka from Land of Goshen, who's the owner applicant, Chad Brandon, who's our engineer from Fieldstone Land Consultants. We're here with respect to 6 Watkins Lane. This is a variance application from section 3.08.8 of the ordinance, which would allow a 12 lot plus one, so a 13 lot cluster subdivision in the residential district. We have, we have municipal MVD water, but we do not have public sewer. So the variance, the technical request is for a variance to allow onsite septics per each of the 12 building lots. Again, this is 13 lots, sometimes it's referred to as 12, but I want to clarify for the record that it's 12 buildable lots and one open space parcel. This is just under 24 acres. There's currently a single, a single-family home on what's marked as Lot 1. The neighborhood is generally residential, there's some packets in the submission that sort of, a screenshot from the GIS that shows the general shapes and sizes of surrounding construction, excuse me, parcels. The, there is some wetlands on the southerly part of our parcel, which are marked on the plan. They are sort of outside intentionally of our building on the lope. We have conducted test pits, which I can let Chad speak to if there's any questions. Those test pits have revealed that we can adequately place onsite septic, which would require DES approval. And one interesting piece of this, and I'm gonna flip my display around, is that this piece of land is actually in between two existing cluster subdivisions, which interestingly also obtained the same variance that we're requesting tonight. So the Merrill Common Subdivision, and then, I forget the, maybe Watkins on Scott Drive, result, and project site is in between, so we're sort of sandwiched in between these two clusters. The result of that is that there's actual open space that sort of buffers both of the developments, and we're seeking to present a development scheme that sort of falls in harmony with that, such that it allows for a connection of that, those open space pieces. And the GIS packet in your, in the submission also shows that. So the project itself, again, cluster subdivision, it's allowed as a matter of use except for the fact that we don't have town sewer. Pursuant to the cluster calculations, this lot, when you take into account the wetlands and the steep slopes, is large enough to allow for 19 dwelling units. We are, again, proposing 12 with one open space, and again, a key component here is the, the open space, which will allow for continuous, non-fragmented preservation of land.
Okay, thank you. If you go through the five points, just, as always, just stop between each so that we can, if we have any questions, it can be addressed.
Certainly, and if there's any questions on the presentation, please interrupt. If there's any questions, interrupt, I won't take offense.
Okay, thank you.
Granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, and as the courts have said, to be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. One purpose of the ordinance's cluster subdivision component is to promote conservation of the natural environment and development that's in harmony with the natural features of the land, that's section 3.08.1A, and another is to provide for the efficient use of land streets and utility systems, that's section 1C. The proposed cluster subdivision not only allows for preservation of open space, but due to the location of the adjacent open space promotes connection of those adjacent spaces within the neighborhood. Moreover, the soils of the property have been tested and will allow for appropriate designed and installed onsite septic systems. As such, the proposed cluster subdivision would promote the conservation of the natural environment and will not negatively impact the essential character of the locality or pose a threat to the public health, safety, or welfare. As such, the requested variance does not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance, and granting the relief will not be contrary to the public interest.
Any questions? Tony, please.
Okay. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. As you well know, this analysis mirrors the public interest conversation, so I'll be brief. However, again, the overriding rationale behind cluster development is to promote development in the town that results in harmony with the land. Here, the cluster design will allow for the creation of dedicated open space, encourages development away from the wetlands in the direction of the existing infrastructure. The proposed open space will also allow for the interconnection of conservation land. Finally, the soils, again, have been tested and will allow for the safe use of onsite septic systems. As such, the proposed development will blend well into the essential character of the neighborhood and will allow for the safe and reasonable use of the property. In light of the above, the spirit of the ordinance, which ultimately seeks to promote health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the town, is observed in the requested variance.
Questions?
When you say tested, how far down did you go? On the property to test the land to see if it's...
I'll let Chad answer that.
Okay.
Sure. We did 17 test pits on the property, and the depths of the test pits range basically up to nine to 10 feet in depth. Out of the 17 test pits, 12 of them, we didn't encounter ledge at all in, and again, we did the pit on every lot, and we also dug some along the center line of the road. The five test pits that we did encounter ledge in, the shallowest location was four and a half feet, and the deepest was nine feet. So, we did find very good soils onsite. In fact, the test pits that we dug in the location of the proposed road, on two of the four test pits, we didn't hit ledge at all. There was one pit that we hit ledge at about four and a half feet in the area of the road, and we haven't designed the road yet, but obviously, that's something that we would take into consideration if we're able to go forward with the road design. We try to stay out of that, 'cause there's a cost element associated with working in ledge.
The test pits that you did, is because you wanna see how, the length of the length, the, the depth of the ledge, or were you looking for something else, or...
We were looking for, well, we always look for ledge, we look for seasonal high water table for septic designs, and we look for soil properties. The soils onsite were well-drained soils, very sandy. You know, quite honestly, we were surprised at how good the soils are onsite.
You didn't hit any water?
Oh, we did hit water. Seasonal high water table, which is, you know, a modeling of the soils, that ranged from about three to nine feet throughout the site. So pretty standard soils in, you know, the, in, you know, on the lots, very consistent with other developments that we've done in town.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question, or is that...
Okay, when we get to the public hearing, you'll be able to ask questions. We'll have all the answers for you. I'll get you, no, that's okay. Number three?
So, number three, granting the variance will do substantial justice. Here, substantial justice is done when the loss of denying a variance exceeds the gain to the general public in strictly enforcing the ordinance. Granting the requested variance will allow the property to be developed in a way that strikes a balance of community needs, conservation of the natural environment, and accessibility, and access and safety for the homeowners in the development. Accordingly, denying the requested variance will not result in appreciable gain to the public, which causing a substantial loss to the applicant by preventing the proposed use of the property. As such, granting the variance will do substantial justice.
Questions? Number four?
Actually, I do have a question.
Okay, sorry.
So, in the, in the documents, we have essentially, never mind, actually, I think I figured out what I was trying to figure out.
Okay.
Sorry.
Let me know, if you need it, if you need more clarification. So, moving on to the fourth element of the statutory criteria, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The requested variance will not diminish the character of the neighborhood, which includes existing single-family homes, some on lots in cluster divisions, and in a residential zoning district. The proposed lots will be used in a manner consistent with those neighboring lots, and thus should not produce different or significant traffic, noise, odors, or other detrimental impacts to the surrounding areas. In fact, because this is a proposed cluster design, we believe this will minimize impacts on adjacent neighboring's properties by creating a buffer, one, and two, allowing for the creation of a 12-acre open space. As such, granting the variance will not result in a diminution of property values for neighboring properties.
And that's, and I guess, I'm kinda curious as to how, 'cause that's always a tricky one, I think, to ask, but, to answer, but how is that, I mean, 'cause the, you're gonna increase the traffic flow on Watkins Road, 'cause you're gonna have 13 houses there, you're, you're potentially gonna increase the traffic flow to those houses that are already there, so how is that not diminishing their value?
Well, there would be several, so, first of all, we, there are certain rights the developer has on this piece of property, and we did submit a traditional conventional subdivision plan for you, which I believe allows for nine, nine lots as a matter of right. So, we believe that the, you know, the, whatever, the traffic based on another three or four, three lots, 'cause there's, remember, there are 12, is relatively insignificant when you compare it to the nine, and in terms of a trade-off, you know, a few other cars, as opposed to having sort of a buffer around everybody's lots, we believe that that's not gonna, you know, not gonna diminish the property values.
So, if you're gonna build the nine lots instead of the 13, you, these lots would be, you're still gonna consume all of that space, and then there's no buffer?
Correct. So that's, and that's, and that's ultimately, you know, why we feel the, the cluster design is better. If we go conventional, there's no open space. We use up all of the 25 acres, and, and the individual lots are a little bigger, but there's no open space that can be sort of tied in with these adjacent cluster subdivisions.
Well, that's, that's just one conventional, I mean, I mean, you don't necessarily need to build nine, you could build five, you could build four, you could build two, I mean, you could, you could build one, I mean, it's, so...
But there is, there's a practical, there's a practical component of here, of this here, where, where, you know, and, not gonna...
No, I understand.
Yeah, so, so there are, there's, there's practical, real-world implications or requirements that, that, you know, are necessary in order to go forward, so. And, and I do think, you know, 25 acres in the residential district, you know, property owners have a right to develop their property consistent with the, with the ordinance, so...
All right, just to build on that, Mr. Chairman, part of this project would consist of upgrading Watkins Road to, you know, the town standards, so there would be an improvement along the frontage of the properties. These homes would now have, you know, a nice paved road up to town standards, and that would be contemplated with this project, so it would be improved along that, that stretch as well. Just wanted to clarify that.
Actually, so, which brings up another question, this, this lot plan is not set in stone, is it?
No, so, so we'll have to go to planning after this. So our, our request, we're here because we, we need the variance from the septic piece. We're proposing, we're proposing 12 lots, so, sure, planning could tweak it a little bit.
Well, no, I mean, 'cause Lot 11, I mean, that's not gonna meet the frontage requirement.
There is no frontage requirement in a cluster...
Oh, really?
So that's part of, yeah, so that's part of, it's sort of an exchange, you know, in exchange for providing open space, you get a little bit more flexibility with your dimensional pieces, and so that's why this is all, you know, that, we can look at formulas, we can look at formulas as to what a conventional would result in, we can look at formulas, you know, that the, a traditional cluster would allow for 19 dwelling units, you know, we're not, we're not near the high end. We sort of brought it down, and, and we plan, you know, we are proposing a plan that we believe sort of fits in the neighborhood. It is, you know, it does have, it's not, it does require, it does rely upon the flexibility of a cluster development, but in exchange, you get, you know, you get, what is this, 14 and a half acres of dedicated open space.
So, when you say dedicated open space, is this land that cannot be built on, or...
So, yeah, my understanding is that at the planning process, you go forward with, with proposed, you know, this, correct, this is restricted property.
The other benefit of the cluster development is the conventional layout, you know, if, in fact, we, we were to go in that direction, there would be a requirement to cross some of the jurisdictional wetland areas to get the isolated buildable pockets, for example, on the southern end of the, of the project. So, the cluster development allows us to, you know, cluster those building envelopes and to preserve those areas and minimize any of those potential impacts if we went with the conventional option.
Oh, no, I totally understand that. I guess my question was, the point of having all the open space, when it, I mean, I guess, my thought is that that wouldn't be relevant here because somebody else could buy the property and develop on it.
This is dedicated, this is, this is conservation land.
Okay.
So it's subject, you know, there'll be a deed restriction, it'll go in the registry, and I don't know who it gets deeded to, if it's the Conservation Commissioner, if it's, you know, some third party will, and, and I think that the, the lot owners would have a right, you know, a fractional right to use it.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. Thank you.
What we're dealing with tonight is, if you were to have sewer in this area, then you wouldn't be here.
Correct. So, so the cluster...
So, all you're, all you're talking about is, you wanna do a cluster without sewer, and just having the individuals with septic. Everything else goes before the planning board.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on four?
Uh, yeah, no, the only other question I had, and again, it's, it's due to diminished value, is what's the impact to the people living along Watkins, so if you, if you're gonna set that road up, if you have to widen that for traffic, or how, how much does that affect their property lines? I know, and that's kind of planning, but it is sort of diminished property value.
That was my other question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I think it's an existing town right of way.
It is a public road.
It's a public road right now, so, you know, it really should be up to town standards. If I was a resident that lived on a road, I would want, you know, if the road is built to a higher standard, quite frequently, lots on a nice, up-kept town road have, have more value. We see that in our profession, you know, subdivisions on, on marginal roads, it impacts lot values, it impacts resale. People like to drive up a nice, maintained road and, and enter their property. So I don't see how this development would have any negative impact on the surrounding. I think the other important factor to keep, to keep in mind is, new subdivisions, especially residential subdivisions, oftentimes will increase the values of surrounding properties. You know, a lot of new developments sell for much higher rates than existing older developments in the surroundings, but because of their proximity to that new development, it does increase the value of homes in that area by default. That's just how appraisals work. So we think a development of this fashion done to meet town standards and meet all the requirements, you know, would certainly have a positive impact on the surrounding.
Okay.
And I will just add one more comment to that. There's, it looks like there's two lots on either side of Watkins where it hits Amherst. Those, those houses are on Amherst Road, and the traffic on that road is gonna greatly exceed, you know, any of the small residential traffic that's going into the proposed subdivision.
I understand.
So it's not like there's a...
I was just looking, I mean, if you gotta, if you're gonna, you're gonna be paving that road, and, you know, people's drainage and property and stuff like that.
Yeah.
But if you're putting in a town road that is going to be properly drained and, and whatever, then, then that's, you know, I, that's what I was, I was trying to gather, is not just gonna throw down, you know, asphalt and that's it. I mean, there's, there's, you know, drainage and grading and all that, and, but it sounds like that the whole road would be potentially upgraded from what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, and this is a town road, so that, and it's part of the planning process, the subdivision regs, development regs would dictate all of those sort of fine tuning the, the development infrastructure details, which include, you know, proper drainage so that the roads, you know, it will contemplate snow storage, you know, all those sort of granular, you know, analyses that, that are on the planning side of things as opposed to the zoning side of things.
Any other questions?
So Watkins Lane is an existing town road. It ends in the cul-de-sac that's indicated there, and what you're doing is talking about extending Watkins Lane to allow this subdivision to occur, and you're going to build that road to town standards and, in the expectation that will be accepted, as a town road.
I haven't specifically had that conversation. We build it to town specs, and, yeah, so it would be, we build it to town specs, and we would dedicate, we would propose that it be dedicated to the town in that common, common course.
Okay, fine.
So, yeah, so if the town's taking it over, obviously, it's...
But up until that cul-de-sac, it is a town road.
Correct.
Thank you.
I mean, if you look at the, and that's depicted on...
I'm fine, Mike.
Number five.
Number five has to do with the unnecessary hardship piece, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of a variance would result in unnecessary hardship, because no fair or substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision to the property. The property is unique, and that it's located in the R zoning district, where cluster subdivisions are in allowed use and serviced by public water, but not sewer. Another unique feature is the existence of a public road, Watkins Road, that currently provides access from the northeasterly portion of the property to Amherst. Moreover, the soils have been tested and will support the proposed onsite septic systems. Wetlands located at the southern portion of the property provides further special features. Finally, and most importantly, the property is unique in that it is abutted to the north and south by the open space portions of previously permitted cluster subdivisions. As such, the proposed lot configuration would allow for development on the property in the direction of the public road, and with expanded conservation area located in the direction of the pre-existing open space. Purpose of the cluster subdivision is to allow for development that's harmonious with the land. Here, the proposed subdivision seeks to cluster houses toward the existing public way and away from wetlands and existing adjacent open space, in a manner consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Because the soils on the property, such development can be appropriately serviced with onsite septic systems. As such, in this case, given these facts, strict application of the ordinance will result in a greater potential disturbance on the property, and in a manner that will potentially increase, exist, excuse me, and in a manner that will potentially separate the existing open spaces, which would be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. Thus, there's no substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the cluster, provisions of the ordinance, and its application to the property at issue. The second piece of that prong is that the proposed use is reasonable, and it's reasonable because it contemplates use that are permitted on the property under the ordinance, i.e. cluster subdivisions, and single-family residential and residential neighborhood.
All right, if you gentlemen want to have a seat, I think we have some people who want to talk. So, before I open up the public hearing, I just want to address one thing, 'cause I, I know we have some people here that are gonna be speaking. Tonight, this is, they're, they're coming forward looking to seek to have regular septic systems as opposed to town sewer. The, if, if, if everything is approved, this still has to go to the planning board, and the planning board will have, will be making the decision on the development. So, I just want to make sure that you're all aware that we're, you know, that this is, this is only one step of probably many that they're gonna have to go through to get this done. We're just talking about the sewer tonight in regards to that, and so, we can't, you know, the planning boards are the one that's gonna make a determination about the lot, the sizes, you know, the traffic patterns, all of that is gonna be the planning board. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. You know, so, with that being said, is there anybody out there that would like to speak in favor of this petition?
Oops.
I always start with that one, that always gets everyone, don't worry about it. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak against this petition? Come on down, please sign in, and the light is on. Direct your questions to us after, after the, the testimony, the, the petitioners will sit and answer questions, but direct your questions to us, please.
Yep.
If you could have a seat and just state your name and, and your address.
Yep, good evening, my name's Heather Dubois. I'm at 40 Amherst Road, and if you look, you will see that I'm right at where Watkins Lane enters.
You're on the cul-de-sac.
And there's not officially a cul-de-sac, but yes, on this map, there's a cul-de-sac. So first, I just want to say that I have had very little time to receive all my information. They tried to deliver the certified letter on Thursday, I was not able to get it until Monday, so as of yesterday, I was able to get to the town, get everything that I could. So, in terms of you speaking to the fact that specifically what we are doing here for this evening, I don't know a lot about septic systems, I can only speak from a little bit. First of all, they spoke about soil tests being done. When I asked for any kind of information about that, there was nothing on file, so I'm curious about that.
Okay.
Second, I've lived here all my life, everything I know about the land up there, a lot of ledge, so I'm questioning, like, what they're proposing here. I don't know how much you guys know about septic systems, but I know that that is the primary, you know, talking point, which is wonderful to hear, because I would hope that someone here has knowledge of that and is researching more to understand it, and have the knowledge that we need before we say, yes, we can go forward with this. I definitely have a lot of questions about things. I don't know, some of them I know don't, don't belong here, and it's definitely at the planning stages. One thing I do question, though, and I don't, I don't know if it ties in with, with the variance that's being asked about, but they're speaking a lot about this conservation land being, like, around it. I would specifically like to possibly get an explanation about Lot Number 12. The big white space that we hear, you see here, is, there is a stream that feeds, and it is a pond that's there, and Lot Number 12 is showing that they're including, like, the pond on this lot. So, there's this focus... So, there's this focus on this nice conservation piece of land. I'm wondering why we are not including the pond in that conservation part. So, I don't, I don't know if that can be answered. I don't know the formalities here.
I, okay.
It looks like a major portion of that pond actually is part of the conservation. There's a small part of it that is on lot twelve.
Right. So, I guess I'm just asking in terms of when you're talking about a conservation of land, wouldn't the pond be a significant...
I think it's just a matter of dimensions.
Maybe I don't understand how you can come up with, like, lots, and I just feel like that's a substantial piece of if we're gonna talk about a conservation land and why that isn't part of that. But it's probably has something to do with details and how you can build on lots and the space that you're working with, so that's probably a piece that I don't quite understand. So, some of the other concerns I think are more for the planning board because we're speaking specifically to the septics, but I definitely don't feel I've had enough time to really research more about that and would like to know more about soil tests being done.
If this goes forward, you're gonna have plenty of time
Okay.
to research it when it comes to the planning board, if it goes to the planning board.
And given, and if that area around the lake is conservation, that would involve the Conservation Commission being involved in this decision process as well. There's a whole Conservation Commission that is involved in a lot of these areas as well that would have to sign off on something like that as well. Because, you know, obviously, you know, if that's, if that is the case, and I did notice that myself, yeah, they, this isn't gonna be, development's not going up next week, so...
Right. No, and I understand that. I realize it's a process, so I'm making sure that, you know, where my questions are directed to do that explanations and understand it, that it's going to the right board. Okay.
And as far as the soil information, again, I'm sure if you request that information, if it does move forward, they'll be able to provide that to you. They would, and they definitely have to be able to provide that to planning and conservation.
Okay. Okay.
Trust that, yeah. Anybody else? You said, you had a question? Come on down, or you can go, either one. We don't, I got time. My time's your time.
You can both do it.
Did you sign in and state your name?
Evening. Right. So, I live on Merrill...
No, sorry. Name.
Chuck Dutton.
Okay.
I live on Merrill Road. Been there since the construction of the residence. And so, we're talking about drainage, and we're talking about septic systems and runoff. If you go and look at the Merrill Road plan, most every lot on that street has some sort of environmental easement, right, for drainage. And having lived there all the years, there's quite a bit of runoff that comes off of that back hill to the south and the southeast of that residential area, which is kinda sorta where this area is going to be built. So, and I'm assuming that the reason why we can't go ahead with public sewer is because it's not available in the area?
Right. So, if public sewer was in that area, we wouldn't be meeting tonight.
Okay.
So...
So, with that, with that thought in mind, the runoff on the hill that I see, that gradient behind the residential area, is pretty extreme sometimes in the wet springs. And, you know, I've lived there for sixteen years since its inception, so it's been, I've seen some pretty, pretty big nasty times in the springtime where all the easements are full, all of them are draining, and, you know, to the point overflowing. Now, if we've done perk tests or drainage tests in this time, the state's in a drought. It's probably been in a drought for what, two years, two and a half years? So, I kinda question the validity of the drainage test at this time, you know, with the environment being the way it is. So, you know, and this, wetlands at the end of Merrill Road, that a lot of that drainage comes down into that, like, brook or that brook area that comes around Tudorski Field. It all kinda drains through there and drains away, I think, into that pond. So, my curiosity would be, is if we go ahead with this and say this gets approval, and we put in these twelve septic systems in a dry period of time, and they start to break down when we really start to get back to normal drainage in that area, what would be the, what would be the, you know, the homeowner's responsibility here? The town's responsibility? The current homeowners and the neighboring communities? I mean, how would we handle that? And that's my concern about going forward with this.
Okay.
One of the things that they look at is not necessarily what the current environmental conditions are, but what the actual soil conditions are. And they have ratings at the state level as far as what the soil conditions are, and you could be in a drought condition, you could be in a hugely wet condition. Not that we've had that recently, but what they look at is what the actual soils are and what the soils can accommodate over a variety of different conditions. And so, that's what they're, they're not looking at what the specific conditions are now because you're right, we're in a semi-drought condition. They're looking at what the actual soils are and what they can handle over a period of ten, twenty years.
So, in the case of if the septic systems get put in and they start to break down for any reason, unforeseen reasons, and we start to get septic drainage into the areas, the runoff areas in the Merrill Road communities, I mean, the residential area, I mean, how would we handle that? I mean, how would the, how would the town approach that? I mean, is it homeowner against homeowner? Is it, does the town step in and help to solve the problem? I mean, who would be the responsible parties at that point? Because I'm sure the builder would be gone by that point if it's two or three years down the road, five years down the road. How do we resolve that? How do we, you know, my property values could be depreciated because of what's being put in place, and that's my concern.
If you have an issue going down the road, if this goes forward, and it's an if, if this goes forward, then ten years from now, if you discover that there's an issue on your property based on another property, then that's an issue that's dealt with one-on-one.
So, it's homeowner against homeowner at that point?
No, there's, Jillian? There's something, there's something to be said on as far as, I'm gonna differ.
I don't have an answer to that question right now. My understanding is the same as yours, is that it would be a civil matter at that point.
So, we're making a leap of faith here.
But I mean, but if, but if you're, not to interrupt you, but, I mean, if your septic system was to go and flood into your neighbor's yard, I mean, you know, you and your neighbor would be dealing with that. I mean, it's a...
But that's a known...
I understand your concerns.
That's a known commodity at this point, right? This is an unknown commodity, so we're kinda making a leap of faith here that twelve septic systems are going into this cluster development and we're, be assured that five, ten, two, whatever many years from now, none of them are gonna break down.
But there was also a leap of faith when we allowed you to build your septic system that it wouldn't impact the neighbors on either side of you.
Well, you built, you allowed my builder to build that community.
That's correct.
I had no say in the matter at that point in time.
But it was allowed based on the soil science at the time.
But we are also at the bottom of the hill. Right? We're at the bottom of the grade, which I think makes a difference here. I mean, if they were to build people, houses above me in the grade, I'd be concerned, and that's because all our drainage comes down.
It's all based on the soil science.
So, okay.
Still's gotta go downhill. It's all gravity, right?
No, and...
Not necessarily.
Well, okay. So, I understand the point, I understand the point you're making, okay? And definitely I'll address it with them. If they went with the conventional plan, if they said, you know, well, we're not gonna do the cluster, we're gonna do the conventional plan, then they can do that. They don't need to, they go to planning, they don't need to come here, and they could still put nine septic systems up there. So, so it's, I mean, so I understand where you're coming from, and definitely, you're entitled to answers, definitely entitled to answers. And obviously, that's go to planning, but again, I mean, they could just scrap it and put nine up there, and you're still gonna have nine septic systems up there. Difference is nine or twelve. You see what I'm saying?
It also means the location of where the septic systems are on the lots as well, right? These seem more concentrated if, you know, where these lots are so concentrated, there's gonna be a lot of concentration of drainage, sewerage, whatever, coming out of those septic systems, leach fields.
Right. And those are valid concerns, and I'm taking notes as people are talking. These are all questions I'm gonna have for when they come back up. And try to get you what we can for answers. Like, and like Lynn said, if it goes through, it would then, it'll then fall on the planning board to also answer those questions and to ensure that that is taken care of and that those concerns are addressed by whatever means, you know, whether it be drainage or walls or what have you, to make sure that those are addressed because we don't want neighbor on neighbor or neighbor on town or town. Nobody wants that. Nobody wants to deal with that. You know, now, that being said, there's so many inevitable, I mean, what if we get with an earthquake in this? I mean, there's so many different things that could happen. I mean, so we can only do so much and only say and plan for so much, you know. But, you know, I have been taking notes, and I will have them address it and try to get you the answers you're looking for and try to get some assurances. But again, you know, it's, you know, like I said, even if it doesn't go through tonight, for whatever reason, they could turn around and build nine up there, so, and they don't need to come to us, so. But I understand, I do understand what you're saying, and I plan to have them address that.
All right, thank you. And one more question regarding the soil samples and how they behave and drain. Do they behave the same whether it's wet conditions or drought conditions? Or just because it's a clay versus sand versus ledge? I mean, do they all behave the same under all environmental conditions?
I'm gonna ask our soil scientists to address that when they come back.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Taking notes on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not my expertise, but yes, I believe so.
Anybody, anybody else? Oh, come on up.
Hey.
Hi.
Name's Dan Ricker, twelve Merrill Road. I'm actually Chuck's neighbor. So, it was actually good he went before me 'cause he gave me some good ideas that I never written down. I am actually at the bottom of what he's talking about, easement, where the water does come down the hill. So, if you don't think that it does get wet in the spring coming to my house in July, you'll see. Okay? It's just natural. I mean, it's extremely hilly back there. Water drains down gravitationally, unfortunately, okay? To the left of my driveway is where the water runs. It goes under the road. It goes to the other side of Merrill Road, all the way through past Tudorski, and it kinda just stops there. All right, so if we're talking about septic systems and we're talking about leach fields and things like that, I'm worried about the environmental impact on these situations, okay? That water ends up somewhere, okay? It ends up in the Meramec, all right? So, if these people, this new development is above us, and we have a leach failure, like Chuck was talking about, we're gonna have a serious environmental issue, right? And that's right in my backyard, and I have a little bit of a problem with that.
Okay.
Okay. With regards to the test pits, that were dug, seventeen test pits, ten, nine, ten feet, I'm not a soil scientist by any stretch of imagination, but I'm just curious, on a twenty-five acre lot, is that standard? Because it seems kinda low.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I know that the test pits are usually dug.
No, I'm talking a mountain of test pits, because for twenty, twenty-four acres, that seems relatively low in my opinion. And again, maybe it's standard, maybe it's not, I don't know. But, you know, we're talking twenty-four acres of land, and you're giving me seventeen samples. That doesn't seem very good to me, or at least from a scientific standpoint. Now, I'm curious about the size of the homes, if we're talking about septic. To my knowledge, a four-bedroom house has to have a certain size septic, and then higher than that, you need a larger one. So, I'm curious about the size of the houses. Obviously, if we're looking at a six-to-seven bedroom home, that's a larger tank size, okay? Which is a larger septic field. All right, so, I'm curious about the size of the homes. I know mine's a four-bedroom, and I have a fifteen-hundred gallon. I'm assuming a larger gal, a larger home is a larger-sized tank.
Fair enough. Yep.
And again, well, on a complete, oh, all right, nevermind. I'm curious about, in this letter, all right, it's on my seat. You talk about the aquifer conservation district and a wetland protection area. What exactly does that mean? Because you say that this property is built on the watts. So, in this, in this note, it says, "The subdivision will be serviced by private septic systems whereas municipal sewer can be required." "The parcel is located on Watkins Road, which is residential, and aquifer conservation district and wellhead protection area." That sounds like that area is designed for another purpose. I'm curious what, if you know what that means. Wellhead protection area, aquifers, that kinda gets me into the water thing, and our water situation's not the greatest right now. So, I'm just curious if anybody knows, has an answer to that.
I have an answer.
Sure. The aquifer conservation district is almost the entire town. It's where the aquifer exists underneath town, which allows people to draw wells and that sort of thing. So, there are additional regulations for the aquifer conservation district and additional, and things that are not permitted, where they would be permitted in areas that were not aquifer conservation district. The wellhead protection area is a area of town that surrounds the town wellheads, and that has additional protections because of the area needed to protect the town wellheads.
So, is there a wellhead in this area?
There is one. This is the area, I mean, I can't tell you the, you got distance, but this area surrounds one of them.
So, there needs to be a buffer around that?
It's a, it's a wide area.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a couple, I believe there's a couple of wellhead areas, isn't there?
Yes, there's at least three off the top of my head.
So, under, under this, like you just said, basically Meramec and aquifer, fine. So, if blasting is required because of ledge or some kind of ordinance to get into the ground, is that gonna affect the aquifers or things like that? Or is there regulations on how to deal with that situation?
It could, and that's gonna be part of the planning board, if this is approved. That's gonna be part of the planning board.
All right. Again, it's kinda...
That's all right.
A little bit of both here, so...
Ask the questions.
The only other thing, I guess, you know, since it's just about septics, you know, like Heather said, I got my letter today. And, you know, I know the mailman delivered it, and I missed the day, and then we got the weekend, and things happen. But, I mean, it kinda goes with this town sometimes that the residents don't really get all the information. And I know this is just one small piece of the puzzle, but like Heather said, I feel a little unprepared for this, for this meeting, but, you know, if we're, if we're, if we're just talking about septics and, you know, it's up to you, ladies and gentlemen, to decide whether this moves forward or not. I mean, the only thing I can say is, you know, I'm more towards this side of this building area, kind of...
But I kinda, we got, we got a, we got a plan here that we can, we see a street view, so I can have a pretty good idea.
Right.
Where you're from here.
Right. So, I mean, I guess, you know, with, with, what I'm concerned about is the thin strip of conservation area around those, okay? That's gonna be an issue for me. And then, obviously, just, you know, the way a leach field, the way, the way that it feels like, and whether, whether you agree or don't agree with the migration of water downhill, it seems like they are basically going to the bathroom on the top of my head.
In, in, I can understand, I can understand.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Because they are literally gonna be above me, and that's, that's an issue for me. Okay?
I understand.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak against? All right, gentlemen, if you'd like to come back up. I know everybody has some... So, let's start with, 'cause I've been taking notes here, so I'm sure I can cover a couple of things.
Direct us.
Let's talk about soil samples as far as behaving during a... Let's talk about soil samples, as far as behaving during a drought versus wet. Test pits, only seventeen on twenty-four acres, and the information for the soil, I'm assuming that we have that, or that the abutters can get access to that.
I don't have the test pit information with me, but I'm sure that Chad does.
Yeah, we have the test pit information. We would be happy to, you know, to share that information. You know, we're conceptual with this development, obviously before the board, seeking relief on the septic designs. We performed seventeen test pits, that's not a bad number, that's actually, you know, we have twelve lots. Normally, we would dig at least one test pit on each lot, make sure that the soil's properties that we find are adequate, are more than adequate. And we also dug some test pits in the road in areas that we wanted to verify if there was ledge or not. The test pits and the soil properties on this property are very good. It's a well-drained soil. Sandy soil, I'm not a soil scientist, so I just wanna clarify. I know one of the board members said we will ask the soil scientist. But the individual who performed the test pits was Christopher Guida from our office. He is our wetlands and soil scientist. And, you know, he, I did have a conversation with him. I am a licensed septic designer, I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone. And the soils on site are very good. The lot sizes will meet all the requirements. The approval process consists of, we're not done digging soils and proving these lots out. We actually have to re-dig these at a later date, so that somebody from the town can witness them as part of the approval process that we would go through with the planning board. We also have to submit designs to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Septic Bureau. All the designs have to meet their standards and ultimately seek their approval. So things just don't happen overnight. We have regulations to meet. These lots and all the test pits that we've performed exceed any requirements that we would, you know, they will exceed the requirements of the local and state regulations. They're not minimum, these are not marginal test pits, they're very good soils. So speaking to test pits in a drought or wet condition, soils actually tell the story regardless of what time of year it is. Because, and again, I'm not a soil scientist, but I am licensed to evaluate test pits, because I'm a licensed septic designer, so I can speak to this to some degree. But there is staining inside a test pit in the soil matrix that shows you where the seasonal high water table comes over the course of time. That's the estimated seasonal high water table that we have to determine in order to determine the adequate separation from that point to the bottom of a septic system. We have evaluated that in all seventeen pits. And as I stated, the test pits range from thirty-two inches to seasonal high water table, all the way to nine feet. Which shows you, I mean, if you're getting test pits in the range of nine feet, you're in a very sandy soil. The other thing that I would like to point out is, there's been a lot of reference to drainage, stormwater runoff. Very valid concerns at this stage, certainly. Part of the planning process is we would have to design the plan to meet the town regulations, which the burden is on the applicant to prove that there will be no negative impacts to the surrounding areas as a result of the development. We fully look forward to hopefully going through that process. The other thing that I would point out is, if you look at the topography of the site, our site actually drains primarily to the southern portion of the page, and not towards Merrill Street, or, excuse me, the development to the, on the upper portion of the page. And I think there is some confusion, because the, there's a ridge or a high point that almost goes along our property line. So a good portion of our runoff is actually gonna go down towards the wetlands that we have in the conservation area as depicted on the plan. But regardless, we are required to meet the, the local standards relative to stormwater runoff, and we fully intend to do so.
So, so that being said, there are two residents on Merrill, so that they actually have drainage in their backyards, and there's no property up there right now. But you're saying that the way, the, when you're putting in these properties, the drainage, you're gonna be changing the drainage, or? Because right now, they're saying that they have drainage. So their concern is that these properties are only gonna increase it, because you're getting rid of some of the land mass up there that might absorb drainage, what have you, put in leach fields, all that.
We would have to mitigate any stormwater runoff from this project. And that's, that's outlined in the subdivision regulations. We would ultimately go through a third-party review with the town's engineering consultant. And we would have to prove to them that this project will not have a negative impact on the drainage elements. You oftentimes do that through the construction of stormwater management areas, where you capture, treat, and meter the stormwater runoff off-site. On this particular property, we may be able to employ some infiltration, where we are allowing the stormwater to infiltrate into the ground because of the sandy soil properties that we did observe. So we, we don't anticipate, we, and frankly, don't believe that we would be allowed to have any negative impacts as a result of stormwater components. And that's, we believe that to be a planning issue, that we do look forward to designing and addressing. The...
What, so home sizes, do we know? What are we looking at? Because that was one of the questions.
We're looking at probably a three-to-four bedroom home size. And DES, the DES approval process, they address what they call a site loading calculation, which is again, based on soil properties. Every lot has to be a minimum lot size in order to accept and handle the septic load on that particular lot. These lots are large enough, given the soil properties, to handle the septics that we're anticipating. Conservation developments, actually, there's a different regulation for conservation developments as well, because you're promoting land preservation. So there's gonna be a lot of land in preservation around the perimeter of the project. But nonetheless, the DES approval process does evaluate lot size. They make sure that the size of the lot is adequate to handle the septic loading. These lots do exceed their standards. So they're larger than required. They're not minimum or marginal lot sizes.
But if, but if someone were to propose, if, if this gets approved, and you go to planning board, and the subdivision is approved, if someone wanted to build a six- or eight-bedroom house, then DES would have to approve a septic system that was sufficient to handle a six- or eight-bedroom house, is that correct?
That's correct. It would have to meet all of their regulations. You can't just do what you want with septics. It has to, it's ultimately regulated on a state level. And I guess, just to speak to, I mean, we're, we're not anticipating any problems with the septic systems here because of the soil properties that we've witnessed. And we are gonna be doing additional testing on these lots, because again, we have to dig additional pits for the town to witness as part of the process. But there is a lot of relief from where we're proposing to build in the jurisdictional wetland areas. A lot of elevation relief. So that's why we're getting good depths to seasonal high water table. The other thing where I was going with that prior statement was there was some talk about enforcement. Is it homeowner against homeowner? Well, no, it's actually, you can contact the State of New Hampshire Subsurface Bureau if you think somebody's septic is in failure, and it's creating an environmental situation. That becomes an enforcement action on the state end, and the state would approach the homeowner. It's ultimately their obligation to have a operating septic system that meets their requirements.
I think that answers one of your questions, sir. Now, somebody, and there's, I think, the first individual commented about the shale, or the slate, or in that area. Ledge, sorry, thank you. One of those things, rocky, let's put it that way. So blasting, how is that gonna impact everything? Because, I mean, maybe that's a planning thing, but I'm, yeah, I'm kinda curious as to. I mean, that's a question that's been raised. I don't know if that's something that we can speak to, just real quickly, just to maybe address some concerns.
Yeah, I mean, based on the test pits that we have conducted to date, our objective would be to design something that avoids blasting. That's an expensive operation. It's not something that, you know, we promote, it's something that we try to avoid. You know, soil properties vary throughout a piece of property. I'm not sitting before the board this evening and saying that there's gonna be no rock encountered at all.
And it can affect surrounding properties.
There is a...
And so it needs to be taken into consideration. But again, that's taken into consideration at the planning board level.
That's correct. That's typically where we would handle that. And there are procedures that everybody has to follow if they're going, if they're going to blast. In order to safeguard against impacts to abutting properties and so on. At this stage, we are not anticipating blasting. But certainly, as we move forward, hopefully, we would be able to speak to that better at a planning level.
Were there any other questions, concerns?
There was some, there were a couple other, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, yeah.
Just answer a couple of their concerns that were raised. Again, just to speak to the test pits, licensed designer, also a professional engineer. The test pits were done by another licensed septic designer, certified soil scientist, and a wetland scientist. And they are good test pits. Every single one of the test pits we perform passed all the requirements that are on a local or state level. There was a question relative to lot geometry, and why part of the man-made pond on the property is on one of the lots. There really isn't a reason that lot geometry could be modified in a conservation development. There's no minimum lot size, no minimum frontage, and there's very little requirements relative to setbacks. So that's certainly something we could consider as far as modifying the geometry of that lot to place the pond in conservation. There's no, you know, we're not pushing the envelope with this development. As Attorney Class stated, the density calculation supports up to nineteen, based on the site characteristics. We're proposing twelve, because we think that's a good development. It clusters the units, minimizes the impacts to the adjacent jurisdictional wetlands, and we think it's a very responsible development. So I just wanted to touch on the geometry item, and I'm not sure if there was anything else.
I think, that's, that's what my notes, I think we've covered everything.
I think that's everything.
I guess I would just note that there's not public sewer in the area. So, so everybody is on septic. So to the extent that folks are worried about septic, you know, they're on septic too, and those concerns go both ways.
Alright, sure.
Tony?
Tony?
Yes, on all the test pits that you did on the different lots.
Thank you.
What would I do without you?
I know. Just out of curiosity, did you find any ledge in any of the lots that you were testing? I think you said you did.
Twelve out of the seventeen test pits, we didn't hit any ledge. And so let me just check real quick. We hit ledge at four and a half feet in one of the test pits along the center line of the road. If I may, just open a plan, it's a little more...
Chad, do you know which lots?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the plan and tell you for sure. I'll just walk right down to.
My guess is three, four, eight, and nine.
Sorry, I'm just going through the test pits real quick, and then I'll find them on the plan. So on lot three, which is test pit sixteen, we did encounter, and this is the difficulty, where, you know, when you're, when you're six feet in the ground, it's difficult to determine whether you've hit ledge or if you've hit a rock. What we call it is refusal, and a lot of times, we just call it ledge. That's a, it's a, where we stop the test pit is where your design can start from. So that one was, excuse me, at five feet on lot three. Which again, is, you know, that's a very, that's a good depth for septic system designs. And if, you know, anything within eighteen inches is considered a ledge lot, you have to do more test pits. The other one, let me just see here. On lot four, which is test pit fifteen, we hit it at just over five feet. So again, you know, that was a good test pit. Test pit eleven was in the road, that one was at seventy inches, so again, over five feet. Test pit seven was on lot nine. That was seventy inches, again, over five feet. And then the last one. Test pit eight, and I just have to locate it on here, I'm sorry. Oh, and that's actually behind lot nine, so it's on the backside of lot nine. And that one was ninety-six inches, so over eight feet. So those are the, so all the test pits that we did encounter refusal or ledge in, they were at, you know, very good depths. And we often, you know, especially in Meramec or anywhere in New Hampshire, we're encountering ledge at shallower situations, and we're still meeting state septic design standards. And again, the other important feature here is, is the soil materials from the surface to that depth was very sandy, well-drained soil.
So what you're saying is you found ledge on these lots, but don't worry about it, because the sand is gonna be there to consume the...
It's lower than...
It's lower than, and it's okay.
Yeah, in theory, and in...
You don't have to blast, that's what I'm gonna say.
Excuse me?
You don't have to blast.
We don't believe we would have to blast, based on our test pits that we've found, that's correct. We're not anticipating that. Now, you know, we dug seventeen test pits. You know, we don't know everything that's going on below grade, so I can't sit before you and with a straight face and say that we're not gonna encounter anything out there that would require some blasting. But what I can tell you is that at this stage, we feel we've done adequate evaluation, to be able to prove that the request that we have before you tonight relative to septic designs, that every single one of these lots can support a septic system that exceeds local and state criteria, and will not create any environmental impacts on any of the abutting properties. When it comes to design, and road design, and blasting, you know, we look forward to doing additional testing, but there's no indication at this time that we're gonna have to blast.
Thank you.
So I just have to ask, having witnessed what septic failure looks like, and seeing said results, you get one person in there who's putting bleach in their laundry, who's throwing eggshells into the, you know, the compactor. Explain to me how it's not going to go above the ground like I have seen on previous failing septics? Because I've seen it go above ground, and I've seen it runoff. And so, I mean, and it's no disrespect to you guys, but I mean, there's ledge underneath. It's got sand, that's great. But it doesn't take much for someone to destroy their septic.
I mean, anybody can destroy a septic. I mean, I, I mean, there is a component to a septic system that requires maintenance. And that's the responsibility of every single homeowner. Every septic system in Meramec, at some point in time, is gonna fail. Everything has a lifespan. It doesn't necessarily mean it's failing because of the soil properties that are around it. It's failing because of the poor maintenance over time, or the accrual of things that...
Of course.
That go through it. But it doesn't mean that you can't dig up that area of the septic system and put it exactly in the same spot, which is done all the time. I mean, we've seen pipe and stone systems that have been in the ground for, you know, fifty, sixty years, and they're operating fine. I mean, you may, there's just such a variety of situations. What I can tell you is that the majority of failures we see are marginal systems, where you have twelve... you have twelve to eighteen inches to seasonal high groundwater. You know, you're putting a system in close, you know, close to that elevation, and, you know, you may get saturation at certain times of the year, and then you would, you know, you start to see stuff surface, maybe. We don't see stuff surface a lot. What you end up seeing is a lot of kind of fresh vegetation on the surface where the effluent level is working its way up in the system, because normally it would be down and infiltrating through the sands below the system. As a septic system starts to fail, the effluent level in that system works its way up into the pipe and into the stone, and you start to see the vegetation around it become quite green. And that's kind of a sign that your system is probably being stressed or something's happening. But I can't sit here and say no system is ever going to fail. There is a maintenance component. The reality is, is that these systems are not in a saturated condition. They're in a very well-drained soil, as I stated. We have very good depth, the seasonal high water table, so there's no reason that any of these systems would have issues in a, you know, a short period of time. But certainly, if, you know, someone dumps grease down a system and they, they send all the, you know, the, paint is another thing that can fail a septic system. You know, there, there are situations that are out of our control. Again, the state is there as an element from an enforcement standpoint, so you can only hope that when you're dealing, normally we run into those situations a lot of time in rental properties, too. You don't run into that a lot in, on homeowners' properties because they ultimately have to pay for it to get replaced, so they can appreciate a maintenance schedule and understand that there's a cost associated with that going bad of, you know, ten to twelve thousand dollars to put in a new system. But, yeah, I think you're correct. I mean, we see that.
That was just it. Before I close the public hearing, is there anybody else who wants to speak against this? I have two more people, if you'd jump, we could have a seat.
Heather Dubois again. I just am curious, in the way that I read, so I'm understanding we're talking septics a lot here, and the way that I read the application is that they are to permit a cluster subdivision to be serviced by private septic systems?
Mm-hmm.
We're talking a lot about septics. Are you also awarding, like permitting a cluster subdivision to occur there? Is that part of this, the way it's stated?
So the way that, the way that this works is that the variance is because in order to create a subdivision, septic is, I mean.
Cluster.
So sewage is required.
Yep.
So, you know, what we have to do is look at this particular case and say, is the fact that there, there is no public sewage in the area a factor in hardship with the development? And/or is there a reason that that's in the ordinance to prevent, you know, such said from occurring? So it kinda, it's a decision that you're gonna have to make.
So what I'm trying to clarify for myself, when I look at the options on the way that this land can be developed, okay, we're looking at the potential of twelve lots being, that's twelve septics, is my understanding, versus a more traditional approach, or conventional is what we call it, right, where you're looking at, was it seven?
Nine.
Nine.
So, to answer, so I think, I think I can answer your question.
Okay.
There, because they're looking to put in a, I was gonna call it a public urban developments, but not, but they're looking to put in that development, because they're looking to put in that many, they are before us, if they were gonna go with the contemporary, the nine.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, we wouldn't be sitting here. They could, they could do that without having to come to zoning. It would go to planning.
But you also wouldn't, what they're talking, the difference between the traditional nine and the clustered twelve.
Yep.
Is they're talking about clustering those twelve in a limited space with a lot of green space dedicated around it.
Mm-hmm.
If they were to do just the nine, then that, the entire property could be developed with nine homes without coming to us at all. Still have to go to the planning board.
Right.
Regardless of what they're doing. What they're saying is, can I do a cluster? Because the, the plan, the town requires, if you're going to do a cluster, which means.
Right.
Putting everything together with green space dedicated, you have to have public sewer.
Okay.
And all they're saying is, we want to do that.
Right, right.
Without public sewer.
Without public sewer. And that's what they're talking about.
I got it. So I, and, so what my question is, so I'm also looking at, one of the questions on here is the impact to the surrounding.
Yep.
When we look at what's being applied for here, and they compare it to subdivisions around them.
Mm-hmm.
Those subdivisions, sizes of lots are completely different. Like, we're talking double the size of the lots that are there versus what we're looking at here. So I guess I'm, I'm questioned, that's why I wanted to clarify what the actual, you know, what they're applying for, because I know the planning.
If they weren't clustering, then they may have nine lots that are similar in size, but they wouldn't have the green space that's dedicated to being maintained.
So they could build another Merrill, or they could build another, what was the other, the others? They could build another one, and the lots would be bigger. And, but because they want to do, so when you look at cluster developments in Merrimack, most of them, if they don't have a variance, are serviced by public.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Because you have, as Lennox did, more houses in a smaller area. Now, if they were, if this didn't get approved, or if they wanted to, they could build lots the size of Merrill, not be here at all, and they could still, and they could still do it.
And you'd still have the same issues.
Right.
They're just looking to put more houses in the smaller area. That's why, and that's why you have the smaller lot size. And so when you're building a cluster, like, so, you know, when you're building a cluster development, there are certain things like frontage, a certain amount of frontage that every house in Merrimack, every, every lot needs to have. They won't, they don't have to conform to that because they're building a smaller, they're building a more condensed development.
Right.
In, in, in doing that, they're looking to keep more green space, as opposed to building bigger lots and getting rid of a lot of the fourteen acres or so of green space and build bigger lots.
One of the benefits that the town was looking at when they developed this cluster concept.
Mm-hmm.
Was a lot of these areas are in areas where the soils are not conducive to septics. And so they said, we'll let you build these lots, even though the soils aren't good, but you have to have public sewer to do it.
Okay.
And so that's one of the reasons they're coming before us, saying typically, a cluster would be built in an area where, and there's a couple of them in town that are, that are in discussion stages now that have horrible soils.
Okay, yep.
That just are not conducive for septic, and that's why the cluster was designed. But they're saying that in this particular area, at least according to them, the soils are such that it is conducive to good septics. Now, obviously, people have to maintain them.
Right, right.
I've got a septic system. I've had it for over forty years.
Mm-hmm.
I have no failure. I've had increased capacity for four or five years with an extenuating circumstance, and I'm at the bottom of the hill.
Right.
They drain towards me, but I don't have a problem, so it really comes down to the soils and how it's done. And what they're saying is, in this area, this isn't an area of bad soils, or, or areas where septics are not, they're not even borderline.
Right, right.
They're good here, and so therefore, we're asking for a variance to allow us to do septics so that we can maintain the open space, which the town tends to like. But they tend to like it only if it makes sense.
Right.
And so that's what they're saying, is, is they're only saying that in this area, we have good soils.
Okay.
And so therefore, we, we think we can build septics that are responsible, obviously to whoever owns it. And I think Chad's right. If you own the house, you're gonna take care of it versus renting it. But that was the, the whole concept between doing the clusters. Like I said, we've got quite a few clusters in town that were built in areas that did not have good soils, and you had to have the public sewer. So that's, and they're saying that's not the instance here, and that's why they're asking for variance.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, you know, I think a lot of my concerns go on to the planning stage.
Absolutely.
But when I was reading the application in terms of applying for that cluster.
Yep.
Development, just to understand.
Yep.
Thank you for clarifying.
No, not a problem.
Can you use the mic?
Yeah, sure.
I gotta, 'cause I gotta look at the picture first.
Sure, yeah, that's all. Just make sure it's on. Yeah, it's on.
Hello?
Dan Ricker, just wanted to, had a quick question. So, I'm sorry, what was your name again? Chad?
Director questions us, but yeah, go ahead.
I can't ask him?
No, not directly, sorry.
So here's my, here's my question. We all agree from test pits and soil samples that they are sandy, correct?
Yeah.
So, you know.
We're making the assumption.
Making the assumption, okay. Well-drained was the term I heard, okay? I guess in my opinion, or, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm having a hard time trying to figure out is, would we rather have these septic systems drain back towards Merrill or down this way into a wetland? Because from what I heard on previous testimony was that the topography is down. So if you have a well-drained sandy soil, isn't that going to create an environmental concern?
I'm gonna address my specific situation on my lot.
Well, can I respond to that?
Well.
Do you know what I'm gonna say?
No, with all due respect, your lot has nothing to do with this. This is, this property over here.
It's, it's relative, and that's addressing what you're talking about.
I'll have, I'll have Chad also speak afterwards, but go ahead.
I'm at, I'm at the, kind of the bottom of a, a hill on all sides, but I also have a brook beside me. My septic does not drain sideways, and well-designed septics don't. They drain down, so that if you tested my brook, seasonal brook, whatever it is, you wouldn't find any effluent there because it doesn't go this way, because that's not how a septic system is designed. And that's, that's where I'm relating to what you're questioning here as far as the hill with Merrill. And drainage is something totally different, and that's something that the planning board's gonna have to deal with and will deal with, trust me. But the septic is not related to the actual stormwater or rain drainage.
I can hear what you're saying.
Okay.
You just want to speak.
I guess just to, might as well start with that particular question. I think Mrs. Christensen's response was correct, and the other thing to point out is there are setbacks to jurisdictional wetland areas on a local level and also on a state level, to septic systems. And those are to safeguard against situations where there is a failing septic system and making sure there's adequate separation between those features. The reality is, is septic systems are not designed to have any runoff, per se. They're designed to infiltrate the effluent into the ground, and studies have been shown, depending on what type of system we're talking about, but an enviro system is very common system because it requires a very small footprint, that septic effluent is treated within the first foot of recharge away from a septic system.
Mm-hmm.
That's what the studies prove. That's what the state literature proves. I don't do those tests, but the reality is, is the septic systems are not going to have, in my professional opinion, as a designer and engineer, any negative impact on the adjacent wetland system. In fact, or abutters for that matter. In fact, our, our position and our proposal is that this cluster development is much more environmentally friendly than a conventional development, because we are clustering the development into, you know, the, the, what we would consider the area away from the jurisdictional areas, the wetland areas, where, which allows us to put those areas into a permanent conservation easement. Fourteen and a half acres of land will be placed in permanent conservation when twelve is the minimum, so we're, we're not just meeting the minimums on that level either. But also, a conventional layout requires a minimum amount of frontage, depending on, you know, what soil classification you're in, and then a minimum acreage. And then there's more setbacks. And what that requires is, if we went the conventional avenue, we would have to cross those jurisdictional wetland areas to get to buildable areas in at least four or five locations. This proposal does not propose any of those impacts. We believe this is a better plan, better land planning for this property and better for the surroundings because our conservation land will be contiguous with other conservation lands. And that, you know, we've been before the Merrimack Conservation Commission on many occasions. That's something that we believe the town promotes. It's good land planning, good land conservation, good connectivity, allows for passive recreation, and so on. So I, I hope that answers that question, but I'd be happy to.
Does. Anybody else want to speak against?
If I may just sort of summarize, I mean, we've been getting really detailed on some of these planning concepts, and I just would like to reiterate our belief that this is a very solid plan.
Yes.
And Chad, Chad said it, so I won't say it again. We believe that this is in harmony with the neighborhood, and most importantly, we believe that it satisfies the statutory criteria that we're here for, you know, the variance criteria. So with that, we would, we would rest unless there's further questions.
Unless there's anyone else who wants to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing. All right, close the public hearing. To the board, deliberations, comments, motions?
Can I make a motion for discussion?
Go ahead.
I'm actually gonna motion that we deny Michael Klass of Bernstein, Scher, Sawyer, Nelson, PA petitioner, and land of Goshen LLC, the variance under section 3.08.8 of the zoning ordinance to permit a cluster subdivision to be serviced by private septic systems, whereas municipal sewer is required. The parcel is located at Six Watkins Road in the R Residential and Aquifer Conservation District and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map four C, lot four forty-nine, case 2017-09. And the reason behind the denial is that the purpose of this, of the section point eight regarding the necessity for sewage and public water support is we're talking about a clustered subdivision which will have, however you want to measure it, more sewage per square foot than a typical development. And we're already in Aquifer Conservation District, we're in a Wellhead Protection Area, and, and there is an incline that we need to be concerned about. Even if the septics do flow down, there's still the ledge, and that's not even for us to worry about. But the reality is, there was a reason why this was put into the ordinance, and I think this is exactly the reason why this is in the ordinance in the first place.
Okay, so you're citing substantial justice or, substantial justice or spirit of the ordinance?
Spirit of the ordinance.
Spirit of the ordinance, okay. Do I have a second? I guess I'm gonna second this because I am in agreeance with Rich. I also don't find, I find that there will be diminished, potential diminished value in the properties surrounding, and I don't agree with unnecessary hardship. I don't think that cluster development actually works here, to be honest with you, and that's, so I'm gonna have to second this. All right, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor of denying the variance, say aye.
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 All opposed? Upstain? So, motion, so then, can I have a second motion, please? So, motion, so then, can I have a second motion, please?
Also move that we grant the variance under section three colon oh eight point eight of the zoning ordinance to permit a cluster subdivision to be serviced by private septic systems, whereas municipal sewer is required. The parcel is located at six Watkins Road in the R Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map four C, lot four four nine, case number two oh one seven hyphen one nine.
Is there a special condition? Yes, there is.
Based on, I'm sorry, yes.
Right there.
Yeah, with, with a special condition specified by staff.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Three, two, zero. All right, next step would be the planning board, gentlemen. Good luck.
And that's, that's not a done deal.
Not by any means. All right.
Daisy, you're being rude. Lay down.
Daisy, Daisy, I love you. Come on, sit, sit. She doesn't want to listen to you. Hey, she's a good girl.
Well, she really loves it, doesn't she?
Down, down, down.
My lab's going to go mad when she's got to get home tonight. She's going to be... What is Daisy? What is Daisy?
She's Bernese Mountain...
No, that's what I thought, I was going to say...
I don't, I don't let her get away.
No, I just thought that frame-wise, they were just bigger dogs.
She's typical for females.
All right, I'm sidetracked because I got a Bernese mountain dog on my feet. I'm so... I'd see Fran doing me to with a Bernese mountain dog at her feet. All right, so, no. I love this dog. I do. All right, so, gentlemen, let's...
I move we approve the minutes of February twenty-second as printed.
Were you here?
Doesn't matter, I watched it.
All right, so, do I have a second?
Second.
Tony seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Lenny, say aye.
Say aye, Lenny, thank you. All right, that is five zero. Tony seconded. Do I have, do we have anything to discuss? Tony, Lenny.
Lenny.
Lenny, hold on a second.
I don't have any other things to discuss, unless you do.
Okay. Real quick, and I know you and Daisy got to go, letters. Is there anything, people, this isn't the first time we've heard that people have had, have gotten their letters late, or is there, is that something to talk to them about?
I mean, I can't speak to the mail system, but they're getting noticed according to all the regulations, so I'm not sure. You know, some of them spoke to the fact that it took them two, three days to, to receive it, so we can't really do much about that.
Okay, no, I'm not, I'm not criticizing anybody, I just wanted to just, obviously make sure people have a chance to get their information.
If we have the opportunity to, if we have the opportunity to send out letters earlier than what's required, do we do it?
Of course, we would, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's right.
But I mean, we have, our application deadline's only three weeks before the meeting actually happens, so, and we've got, you know, three, four days in order to get the notices out.
We're just not waiting until the last minute before we send them out. We send them out as soon as we can.
Absolutely not, yeah.
Okay.
All right, motion adjourned?
So will.
All right, second adjourned.